At this time, we'll call this meeting to order. My name's Rick Kachini. I'm the Vice Mayor. Right now, the Mayor is not going to be with us tonight. She's attending a funeral for someone who's died in her family, so we'll be saying a prayer for her tonight. But today is November 16, 2021, 7:00 p.m. Council Chambers Centennial Building, 12th South 5th Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. I'd like to ask Pastor Michael Hayes from Trinity Baptist Church to step up and do an invocation, and from that, we'll do our flag salute.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for tonight. Father, thank you for the leaders that are in this room. Lord, I pray that they would rise up and be the leaders that you have called them to be. Lord, I pray that tonight you would bless the agenda, Lord, and that you would satisfy needs that need to be met. Lord, I pray for discernment. I pray for guidance. I pray for strength when needed tonight. And Lord, I pray that everyone in this room would be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to anger, and that tonight you would grow us closer together and strengthen the bonds of the community so that we can serve the people of Yukon well. Lord, I pray that you would have your hand on tonight's meeting. It's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Take roll call, please.
Selby? Kachini?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Yanda?
Here.
Gilliland?
Here.
Item one. Consider approving a contract with Jennifer King for the position of municipal judge as recommended by the city manager. Would you like to have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Very excited.
Very good. Call for vote.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Okay, let's pass them now. We're gonna have them come up front here and do the swearing in. You'll raise your right hand, please. I, Jennifer King,
I, Jennifer King,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
and the laws of the State of the United States of America
and the laws of the United States of America
and the Constitution and laws of the state of Oklahoma
and the Constitution and laws of the state of Oklahoma
and that I will faithfully discharge
that I will faithfully discharge
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
the duties of my employment
the duties of my employment
during such time as I am the municipal judge
during such time as I am the municipal judge
for the city of Yukon, Oklahoma
for the city of Yukon, Oklahoma.
Okay, that's your loyalty oath. This is your oath of office. I, Jennifer King,
I, Jennifer King,
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state of Oklahoma
and the Constitution of the state of Oklahoma
and that I will not knowingly receive
and that I will not knowingly receive
directly or indirectly
directly or indirectly
any money or other valuable thing
any money or valuable thing
for the performance or nonperformance
for the performance or nonperformance
of any act or duty pertaining to my employment
of any act or duty pertaining to my
employment
employment
other than the compensation allowed by law
other than the compensation allowed by law
I further swear that I will faithfully discharge my duties
I further state that I will further discharge my duties
as municipal judge of the city of Yukon
as the municipal judge of the city of Yukon
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Yeah, bring the family up. We'll get some pictures. Do you want to say a few words, please? Go ahead and say a few words.
Well, thank you all for being here. Thank you, Tammy Kretschmer, and the City Council for giving me this opportunity. I'm so excited and honored to be in this position. I am from Yukon, raised here, raising our kids here. And I believe in the city of Yukon and what it represents. I believe in the integrity of the judicial system and the process and the respect for the courtroom. And I vow to all of you, as my family and friends, as well as the city of Yukon, to do my job. And I believe, at the end of the day, people that step into any courtroom, whether it be state, federal, or city level, they should expect the same thing. And that expectation should be, you walk into a courtroom, you're treated fairly, with respect. The complaining party proves their side of the case. The accused has their opportunity to present their evidence and tell their side of the story. And that the judge follows the law and with the facts that are presented in the courtroom. Nothing outside of the courtroom should matter. And people that have done something wrong are held accountable for that wrongdoing. And so that is what I'm excited to do for the city, and I'm honored to be here today and given the opportunity to do this job for the city of Yukon. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, should we go on then? All right, we're gonna move on to Presentations and Proclamations. We've got a Small Business Saturday here today. Where's Vicky? Is Vicky here? Vicky Davis is not here. Take this down, and I guess there's your proclamation. Step right up, right here. A lot of folks may not know everybody here, so I'm gonna let Vicky Davis. She's our Main Street CEO or Director. Is that correct? Is how I pronounce it, our Director or CEO. But she's our boss on Main Street, all right? So I'm gonna let her introduce everybody.
Good evening. I brought a few friends with me. What I wanted to do tonight was something a little bit different as we approach our Small Business or Small Business Saturday proclamation. I wanted to invite the businesses that have opened in our downtown area since the beginning of COVID. And I counted them all up. You'd be amazed, we've got 17 businesses that have opened. And with that, I think there's maybe four that are preparing to open, so I just considered that open, too. So Kay, please come up, too. She's one of, Kay is one of our board members, and so I just didn't see you here already. Thank you for being here. So I'm gonna give you the microphone and let, tell us what your business is.
Hi, my name is Vladislava Polaskova. And as you see here, my accent, I was born in Czech Republic, Czechoslovakia. And I am here from 1999. And I'm so happy I got a chance to open and start a business here, right here in Yukon. So because I know a lot of people, they support me because we had a food truck business, too. We closed that in 2016. And from that time, I really was looking for hard, I mean, very hard way. I was looking for the way how to start the business, how I can continue with my love to baking, for baking and cooking, and to share my Czech heritage, Czech culture. And it really happened because I really want that and I know if you really want something, it's gonna happen. And it happened to me.
And the name of your business?
And the name of the business is my name, Vladislavas Czech Bakery and Cafe. You can see us and check us at the Main Street every day, not Monday, but every day. We have a business hours on our websites. And I will be very happy to meet with you, share with you my happiness, how happy I am to be here. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Mindy Applegate. I own the Honeydew Checklist. I'm a virtual assistant. So I work with a lot of small businesses in town, usually under five people. And I provide a variety, everything from customer service management, are you sending text and email blasts to stay in front of your clients, some bookkeeping, organizing receipts, are you prepared for your CPA? So a variety of different services. If you need any assistance, let me know. Thanks.
And where are you located?
I am right off Fourth and Maple. I'm in, with, in Wesco.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Guthrie. I am actually opening in January of 2022, but I'm opening Found Love Bridal Consignment in the Old Mill Plaza, just right across the way. Yeah, so if you have anybody that got married in the last two years that wants to sell their dress or getting married and wants to buy a dress, come see us.
Well, I want to thank all the businesses for coming here. And as all of you know, that if these businesses don't exist, we don't get tax dollars. And guess what? If we don't get tax dollars, then we, all of us, have to come up with income taxes and house taxes, whatever taxes the city has to operate with. So keep that in mind. So keep welcoming these new businesses to our community. And please, understand where the city of Yukon is. I've run across many people that didn't realize where the city of Yukon lies. It's not south of 10th Street, okay? It's north of 10th. So much more about that later. But I want to read the proclamation at this time. Whereas the government of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, celebrates our local small businesses and contributions they make to our local economy and community. Whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 331.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of the firms with paid employees, and they are responsible for 65.1% of net jobs created from 2000 to 2019. Whereas, small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector of the United States, 88% of the U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And 92% of the small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. Whereas, 56% of the shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday 2020. And more than 50% of the consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of the social media recommendation. Whereas, the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed that this Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, representing Shelley Selby, Mayor of the city of Yukon, do hereby proclaim November 27, 2021, a Small Business Saturday. Let's give him a hand, please. Where's our news guys?
Well, he's coming up.
So on Small Business Saturday, that's nestled right between the Black Friday and the Cyber Monday, come on down to your downtown Main Street area. They put together quite a retail event. They have all kinds of specials and deals and steals and refreshments and all kinds of wonderful things going on that day. Really, there's so many people that just, hundreds of people just buzzing around town.
Can we get a little closer? Let the news folks get a shot. Show them the proclamation. Show them the proclamation. We good? All right, thank you very much. Give him a hand, folks. Give him a hand. We have any visitors?
I have no request, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. We'll recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Excuse me, I was talking too fast. One A. This is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on November 2, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call for a vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Well, now adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Number two, consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of the council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A, the minutes of the regular meeting of November 2, 2021; B, payment of material claims in the amount of $614,051.33; C, designation, the items on the attached list on the attached list from Technology Department as surplus in authorizing their sale, donation, or trade. Denial of claim number 210266-1 from Paul and Barbara Canellas, is that's right, Canellas, 308 West Platte Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma, for a broken sewer line as recommended by the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. E, setting the date for the next regular council meeting as December 7 at 7:00 p.m. in the Council Chambers Centennial Building, 12th South 5th Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
After you.
All right. Can we talk about D? Who would I need to talk to on that one? Can we get the story on that?
Arnold, is Arnold here? Okay. There was a broken sewer line that was at this address, and it was on their side, so it wasn't on the city's side. And so that's why the O-MAG has, that who has our insurance, that's why they are denying the tort claim.
I was trying to read through the, I did read through the, sort of the, I don't know if you'd call it a claim, but that's basically what it was and why they were asking the city to reimburse them. But there's some details I couldn't quite put together. So we're saying, what were they initially? Why would they say the city was at fault? How did they get to that? How did the resident come to that conclusion?
If their sewer backed up in their house, that could be the reason why. Most of the time, that is what happens. But if it's on their side, you know, if it is on their side, then they are responsible for taking care of that.
Right. Yeah, I didn't know if I was missing something when I was reading through it as to, because I couldn't figure out why they would feel entitled to a reimbursement. But it's just because they're saying the city pipes weren't sufficient to handle the flow from their neighborhood. Is that essentially what they're saying?
Let me go to that real quick and see. Doug, you usually handle all the tort claims.
And they're not, that part, the party's not here tonight, right? So I'm not sure when you get too deep into it, if they're not feeling strongly enough about it to be here. I just want to make sure I understood before I voted.
Yes, we ran a camera line in that line for the tap. Okay, it appeared to be damaged and had some roots coming into the main. They are responsible for repairs that are on their side.
Right.
If it's on our side, then we are responsible.
Okay.
Okay, so that was discussion. Let's call for a vote.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Reports on boards, commissions, city officials. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I would like to report on our project of the Garth Brooks Trail that is along Garth Brooks Boulevard. It starts at Vandement and goes, will go all the way down to Route 66, which is Main Street. We included the photos on the attachment that you all should have. This project is moving along quite well. We do have an incident or an issue with one of the drives, and that is on the agenda later this evening. We will address that. But it is moving along great. The driveways have been putting, put in for all those people that are across from St. John's Church. That's about the location that they're in right now, but they have been taking care of that, and all of the homeowners seem pleased.
Well, that's good because they, I've seen some of these guys working. They've done a good job there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other discussions? Nobody? Okay, let's go to number four. Consider approving the preliminary plat for Ashton Gray 200 North Yukon Parkway, Yukon, Oklahoma, as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion?
Yeah, I'm just curious if, is there anything that has changed since the last time you visited with us? Anything different or any surprises?
No, sir. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. So the plat is actually an identical replica to what was provided in the PUD as a master development plan map. So same number of lots, same number of, or same size lots, access point. Everything is identical to what was approved in the PUD.
Including the, I'm not sure that one point was approved or not. That was a 75% brick. Is that right?
So in the, in the PUD, nothing about the plat deviates from what was approved in the PUD.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Box. Thank you very much. Okay, discussion, okay, call for a vote.
Yanda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
No.
Number five. Consider approving a revocable permit from Richard Russell, Richard Russell Homes, for a sidewalk around the edge of an in-ground swimming pool, 1208 Abbey Wood Place, Yukon, Oklahoma, as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion. Call for a vote.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Approved, okay. Number six. Consider approving Resolution 2021-20, a resolution concerning bridge inspection responsibility by local government for compliance with national bridge inspection standards by authorizing Oklahoma Department of Transportation, ODOT, to select the firm as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion at this time. Call for a vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Number seven. Consider approving a radio replacement purchase for the police department in the amount of $23,565, as approved by the fiscal year '22 budget in accordance with the Oklahoma City Terminal RFP contract as recommended by the police chief. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion. Call for a vote.
Yanda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Number eight. Consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount of $95,902.18 to be paid to the Chickasaw Telecom Incorporated for network switches and professional services to be purchased from the 2020 revenue note under state of Oklahoma contract ITSW1006 and SW1006. See as recommended by the Information Technology Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Gary, you want to tell us? I know you love being on the side of the camera. You want to tell us a little bit about what we're doing here and the importance of it?
Yeah, what we're doing is, a year ago when we did the bunker project, we upgraded most of the core switching equipment at both Fire and Police, but nothing was done at City Hall. And out of the budget for, the budgeted amount for the bunker, I actually came in $115,000 under budget for that project, for the technology equipment. So I had went to Tammy with a concern that the City Hall facilities, we have 15 switches and out of the, or maybe it's 14 switches, and out of those 14, five of them are past end of life and end of support. So if we have a switch failure, we're dead in the water. We're gonna be having to buy switches. So this is just a chance for us to upgrade the switches here at the City Hall end of town and further shore up the network that, for the equipment that wasn't being replaced because there was no funds in the budget.
So for the people watching at home, what do the switches do?
The switches basically interconnect the city network, the phones, the computers that the employees use to do their day-to-day jobs. You know, everything from the connectivity for paying their water bill to paying their court bill, all of that operates through the network.
So this is gonna be pretty much a necessity?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. And then the few switches that are not end of life yet, we'll be able to repurpose those to get rid of still some other switches that are past end of life. So just kind of moving it all down the food chain, trying to get where we're back under coverage on everything.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Call for a vote.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Number nine. Consider approving a replacement of the Yukon Public Schools driveway, number two on the Garth Brooks Trail project in the amount of $17,935, as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have discussion?[1595.76]
Yeah, I'm, there's a lot.
I kind of have a question too. So is this something that came about after the project was approved or?
Uh, this is something that come about after, we have a lot of small cars that are using the drive. After they replaced it, everything looked good till after we replaced it, and a lot of cars are kind of hanging up coming over that. If you'll look, there is a drawing there, sheet one. It's got a eight percent slope and then a one percent slope and a nine percent slope. It's ten foot wide on the sidewalk. The smaller cars are having problems at the bottom of that, and it's become a speed bump. So the school has asked us if we would replace that. There is another drawing there on sheet two that shows that slope to be six percent, so it's not going to be as extreme. In fact, it's gonna be less than what it was before we were there originally. The sidewalk's gonna go on top of the parking area and not down in the drive itself. As you can see from the drawing where it goes back to the east, and we're going near that trail right there at that point, four feet, six inches wide, I think is what it is. Yeah, four feet, six inches wide.
Are cars getting hung up at the sidewalk or at the, where the drive meets the road?
Depends on the car. It seems to be the low, you know, clearance vehicles are having a little issue.
Well, but is it, I don't want this to be interpreted the wrong way. Where that drive hits the road, that's been a problem for many years. I've seen people, when I was working there eleven years ago, lose their mufflers coming off that same driveway going onto the road. I'm just curious if the problem is where the drive meets the road or is it up on the sidewalk?
It's both.
What was the, the slope before?
Not for sure because I don't have that in front of me, but it was, it was more than six percent, I think. Not a whole bunch more, but because this drive is going back just a little bit farther.
This might be a silly question. Did the engineers go out and watch traffic pulling out at all to see that there was an issue already? And if you increased the slope, I'm assuming that would make it more challenging?
We're, we're reducing the slope is what we're doing. There's two points in that where it is now, it's eight percent and nine percent. We're taking both of them to six percent.
No, what I'm saying is from the original to the one that we just got done doing, did they, did they go and look?
The design engineer designed it to have the, the profile it has, and ODOT reviewed it and approved it. But like I said, with the low, the smaller cars, where it's when we're having problems. So we were asked if we would bring it to you to address those issues.
I, I don't want to sound like a bad, a bad guy. I'm just totally dumbfounded that this has happened, and eighteen thousand dollars is a lot of money for a mistake. It's a big mistake, and I, I'm not looking for individuals or names or departments even. I just want to know how, how are we gonna make sure this doesn't happen again? Because we've got a lot of, when we start putting pipes in, we're gonna have driveways that gotta get redone. I mean, what's the process to catch this kind of?
Well, if you remember right, this was a grant, and ODOT was the one that administered the grant. We interviewed engineers and chose an engineer, but like I said, it's all ODOT controlled because of the way the grant come through. If you're talking about the original design, the design of this sidewalk.
Well, I mean, what, yeah, I guess so that would be different processes in play. I'm just curious, what's?
We're watching, to make sure we have no other issues, we're getting way ahead of this, actually talking about a couple of other areas along this trail, and we want to make sure we address these kind of issues. Like I said, we bringing this to you because it was a request of the school administration.
What was our portion of the original expenditures? I can't remember off the top of my head. I should have looked that up beforehand. I apologize.
For the total contract?
Yeah, the grant covered a certain percent, and we matched a certain percent, is that right?
Yeah, I, I don't remember.
I don't either. I'm sorry to.
Because this is an old grant. I mean, it's a couple of years old.
I'm just kind of thinking out loud, so if anybody else has a question.
Any further discussion? No further discussion. Call for a vote.
Yanda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Wooten?
I abstain.
Gilland?
Yes.
New business. We have any new business, city manager? Council discussion. I'll start with my right, your left.
Uh, it's an exciting time of year. Lots of things going on around town, so I'm sure we'll hear, hear some of those things listed, but it's a great time to get out and enjoy your community and, and meet people and, and share the joy.
My left?
Uh, Christmas in the Park is coming up very soon. It's gonna be great. Just remember that there are people that live in the residential areas and let them in their driveways if you can, but enjoy the lights and have fun.
Well, I think as citizens of Yukon, we have a lot to be thankful for, and I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and as we approach the holidays, be sure to support Yukon and shop Yukon. Thank you.
All right, before I go to the list that the mayor left me, I'd like to just say one thing. I, I went to the governor's symposium for Veterans Affairs, and he announced that we had some kind of pandemic going on in the country, to include Oklahoma. It's the suicide rate for veterans. I'm asking everyone in our community, talk to your veterans, bring them in and see us. If they have issues, we can talk to them. They normally need another combat veteran to talk to, so please, bring them in our museum, American Legion. We have a lot of places where they can come in and get help. So please, talk to those veterans. I, I've done a two-day symposium for the governor, governor's office, and it's been unbelievable, the numbers they've been throwing at us. So please work on that, and I appreciate everything else everybody else is doing. Now for the mayor's list. Chill Your Cheeks Run, five K. That's the mascot dash jungle walk and Kringle Carnival, Saturday, November twenty. How many folks are gonna be out there running the five K with a flag? Let me see the hands. Let me see the hands. I don't see any hands but one here, so I guess I'll be doing it by myself. All right, Opening of Christmas in the Line, in the Park, nightly, starting Saturday, November twenty, six to eleven. Sounds of the Season, tickets on sale now. Tickets go on sale November twenty-second at all parks and recreation centers and YNB locations. The Mayor's Essay Contest, December four, Dale Robertson Center, nine thirty A.M. Winner announced and essay read. Entries must be turned in at the admin office, deadline November twenty-ninth. Mayor's Christmas Party, Saturday, December four, twenty twenty-one, Dale Robertson Center, ten till twelve P.M. Sounds of the Season Concert, Oklahoma Symphonic Orchestra directed by Irv Wagner, featuring special guest Lucas Ross, Thursday, December six, seven thirty, Yukon Fine Arts. We have anything else? Wish everybody a good night and happy Thanksgiving. Kachini and Jordan?